...school district to be able to refine their skills of communication. These students that get to work with me, we actually have 80 students on our debate team this year and it's going to be a wonderful experience for all of them. They've benefited tremendously and getting the opportunity to take eight students this past summer to the national competition was an honor. And I can't say enough how proud I am of this young man. When he won the competition, he was extremely humble throughout the entire thing. He really did represent our school district extremely well. And so it is my pleasure to introduce Mitchell to you.
I'd first also like to state that I am very thankful for all of you being able to support all of us. And also a warning for an elevation in volume and also some PG-13 language. So. As a comedian, mail generally comes from two sources, old ladies and white jobs. That's it, that's the downside. The upside is that it makes going through the mail pretty easy to sort. So I'm going through the pile and it's old lady, old lady, death threat, old lady. Oh, and here's an interesting one, death threat from an old lady. Then I come across one that's actually typed, so I open it. It's a sheet that reads, "As an African American, I am dis- I am disgusted every time I hear your voice because you are not a genuine black man." I'm not a genuine black man? Get ready for a shocker. I am black. Or maybe sometimes African American, maybe even Native American, but never really Irish American. That's where I get the red hair. And as a mixed redhead kid, I really don't fit into the stereotypical spectrum of a black man. Just like Brian Copeland, I grew up in a predominantly white neighborhood where I struggled between being black or being white. Just like Brian Copeland, I've had to been called not a genuine black man. Not a genuine black man. Why do people say that to me? Is it the way that I dress? Is it the way that I talk? Because if we're talking picnic, clearly I am black. But I guess I've always had a racial identity issue. See, when I was younger, I believed that I was colored until I said something about being colored in front of my mother. She said, "Don't say that, you are black. I am black and we are a black family." So for a long time I was black. Until one day in school, the government came out some papers for us to check some race boxes. And I was confused because there was nowhere to put black. So I asked my teacher, who was incidentally white, what to do. And she said, "You're a negro, so check the box that says negro." So I was a negro for at least a week or two until I said something about being a negro in front of my mother and she said, "I told you that we are black." But, uh... Then one day in high school, somebody came up to me and they said, "You're not black. Chaco is black." Do you look like Chaco? I guess not. Your ancestors came from Africa. That makes you African American. But my father, Sylvester, he loved to use the word that hurt the most. "Nigga quit sticking your lip out at me." I wasn't sticking my lip out at you, that's just how that made. And I got two, maybe three steps out before I heard, "Oh, so you a man now, huh? Come on, talk some more shit." And everything went quiet and I was on the floor, being strangled by my own father. "You a man now, huh? Come on, talk some more shit, come on." And then I hear my mother screaming, "Stop it, stop it, you're killing him, you're killing And everything went quiet. And I look up and I see my mother's face. "I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I won't let you hurt you again. I'll get away from her, I promise, I promise." For the life of me, I couldn't understand what she saw in him. My grandfather, Stacy Augry, they were the same guy. The same no good, the same sorry, the same not worth a damn of an individual. The same person that no one ever accused of not being a genuine black man. You know, ever since I got this letter, I, uh, I had this fantasy that I'd go up to the person who wrote this letter's door and I politely knock on it. He'd open it and, see, I'd take this letter and I'd shove it right in his face and I'd wrap him on the shirt and look him dead in the eyes and I'd say, "I want to apologize for not meeting your racial expectations. I am sorry that I support my children and every single one of them were born into a wet block. I am sorry that I don't tell them that getting great is acting white. Please forgive me for wanting more and not less. Who wanted to live in a neighborhood where I am not awakened in the middle of the night by the sound of gunshots and sirens and screams. I am sorry, I am sorry that I look so shitty in an orange jumpsuit that I'm not going to jump on nobody. I am sorry, I am sorry, I am sorry." And then I'd let him go. And walk down the driveway and look back at him as he's still in shock. And tell him that I know that I am a black man. Genuine.
That is impossible to follow.
Mitch, can I get a picture of that here?
My goodness.
Come up there. Hey, let me go this way. Let's get that.
Okay, there we go.
Please.
What's yours?
Okay, you offer your wrist. I might shake him. One, two, three.
Thank you, Mitchell, for sharing that. Thank you.
Thanks for taking some time and sharing that with us this year.
The cool thing is that you actually got a $500 scholarship to go to college for this performance too, for getting second place.
That's great.
Fantastic.
That's awesome.
Okay. So we've concluded recognition portion of the meeting, reports and communications, 2017, 2018 staffing update, Mrs. Shelby Scarborough.
Good evening. As Brenda Hatfield just says, "Well, Shelby, good luck," after following that. I can't do that. Stephanie's passing out, just basically a one-sheet summary of basically our new hires that we have brought on and the number of applicants that we've had in comparison to last year. So there's lots of information about the staff that we employ at Jefferson City. So I want to give you a basic snapshot, but then if there's any information that you would like more of, please don't hesitate to reach out to me and we can certainly dive into as much information as you possibly want. On the front page, the staffing report, we have 1,000, excuse me, 478 employees. Eighty-five of those are part-time employees. Since January of 2017, we have had over 4,000 applicants. And we broke down the demographics of the applicants so you can get an idea on the number as well as the demographic information of those that applied for our positions last year and this year. And then below that in the box are the number of employees, or new employees, and how they identified themselves. And not everyone identified their demographic information on their application, but you will see that there is a significant number of employees that we had, 683, but that also includes summer school, some people applied for more than one position. So let's say I was applying for a teaching position as well as a couple of coaching positions. So it's on positions, not people, so I want to clarify that. And I think it's also important to note the top five undergraduate institutions where our new hires have received their undergraduate degrees. And that's going to come up a little bit later in my presentation on the importance of that information. On the back, I went ahead and printed our EEO report, which is the Equal Employment Opportunity Report that we have to share. And it breaks down all of our positions in terms of male, female, and all of the demographic information. At the very bottom, I think it's important to note that we have 1,108 female employees and 370 male employees. And then all of those are broken down in that grid. And I know it's difficult to read and I apologize, but I wanted to try to get it all in there so you could look at that information. So with this information, you're probably asking, okay, so what are you doing with this information? There's three areas that we're focusing on in HR because unfortunately, there's a lot of pressure on HR because in order to be a premier school district, we have to make sure that we have the absolute best people and best employees that work for our school district. So we're attacking this from three different areas. One is our recruitment. What are we doing to recruit employees? And I was visiting with MSTA today as a matter of fact, and we were looking at some information. And in the last 10 years, there are 13,000 less teachers in the state of Missouri. So with that information, that means school districts are competing for teachers. But it's not just the school districts that have to compete, it's communities. We want people to come to Jefferson City, work for Jefferson City Public Schools, but we are also competing with other communities and other school districts. So what are we doing to set ourselves apart from those other communities and those other school districts? So we're looking at making contact with pre-service teachers, so making contact with colleges and universities, creating those partnerships, to get them in our schools before they even graduate, so they can see, I know I want to work there when I graduate. We also are looking at different, there's different headhunter organizations on recruiting minorities. And it's, there's lots of money involved in this and helping schools as well as business and industries in recruiting minorities. So we've reached out to a couple of those to help us kind of spearhead our recruitment to make sure that not only are we bringing people, like I said, to our school, we're bringing them to our community and showing them what we have to offer here. So once we start recruiting people and we get people to apply, we have to make sure our hiring processes are solid. So in the last few weeks, Brenda Hatfield and I are working at really streamlining, gathering information to figure out how can we best hire, bring people on board, and make sure that the best people are the ones that we are keeping here. So we are working with principals, having one-on-one conversations, because that's where it starts, to make sure that those principals know what they're looking for, what the culture is of their building, and finding fits to match that culture. They're doing a great job with that. So by having those conversations, it's helping us from the board office to be able to help support them and making sure that we're bringing on the best people. It's important also to know the staff that we have so that we can retain our good people. And so instead of focusing on exit interviews, why people leave, we want to know why people are staying, so we can capitalize on that and continue to make those things better. So we're looking at finding ways to support, continue to support the people that we have here. We recently did a staff survey on rewards and recognition. How do people want to be recognized? And there was an overwhelming response that our people want to be recognized as teams or as buildings instead of as individuals. And so we're working together. AC is coming up with our plan on how we can recognize people to make sure that they feel that they're valued and appreciated for the work that they do every day. It's also important to know that we're working on our evaluation system that focuses on growth. We want to grow our own people. So if we have someone that aspires as a teacher that wants to be an administrator, or we have a parent that wants to be a teacher, we have a responsibility to help them grow and develop and become what they want to be within our school district. So we have lots of things going on, but it basically comes down to, we recognize our task, making sure that we are recruiting, hiring, and retaining the best possible people in our school district, and it's a collective effort. But I feel like I also need to publicly recognize the HR staff because the number of applicants and the number of hires that we have is a huge amount of paperwork to get people on board. And they do it with grace and kindness and they are always willing to help other people. And one of the things that we did, I put it in my board report, that we had a new employee orientation, and the ladies, this was even before I became on board, organized those because they wanted to meet face-to-face with all the new employees, to help them with all their onboarding tasks, just to make it easier so they could focus on the jobs they were hired to do rather than signing up for their insurance and benefits and things like that. So I wanted to publicly thank those ladies because that's, they're the first stop when people get hired here, and I think it's a good first stop. It gives them a good impression and helps them hopefully get excited about coming on board with our school district. So, any questions?
Questions for Shelby.
And as you go through this information, if you have questions, feel free to give me a call because I'd be glad to dissect more information about our staff if I need to. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Shelby, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, she made an excellent point. I read something not too long ago that makes a lot of sense, that there was an article about performance measurement and management, and the article talked about tracking success and excellence has its own cadence in that a lot of times what organizations and people do is, if you want to get better, then you focus on what, you focus on failure, you focus on the bad and figure out what do you not want to do. And so I think you made a really, really important point there that if you want to learn how to be good or be great, then go study great. And so I think we've got our compass pointed in the right direction. I think we're focusing on the right things there.
Steve? Yes? One question for Shelby. You were going to talk about the top five schools.
Yes, the partnering with the schools.
Is that going to be another time?
No, I was just mentioning about how we're going to partner with them and hopefully get a lot of the pre-service teachers in our buildings before they graduate.
Okay. As the way you have it listed out here, is this by the number of teachers that came from those universities, how you got them ranked?
Okay. Can you follow up, Michael?
Yep, that's fine. I'm just curious.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Shelby. Appreciate it. Superintendent update, Dr. Liskin?
Well, I think just along the line there, she was talking about attracting folks to, you know, Jefferson City. And as we talk about, I think Mitchell gave the lead-in and talked about being, raising the bar and what's in our water of attracting folks. That was just a great lead-in, so thank you again for coming. And it is that attracting folks and developing and that, you know, we want folks of, you know, what is it that's in their water? I don't know what it is, but I want, that's what I want to be a part of, whether it's a teacher, whether it's a bus driver, whether it's a custodian, whether it's administrator, whatever it is. So that's kind of where we're working toward to become a premier school district. I will touch here on, we have here, as you can see, which, well, you have the board agenda here. If they minimize that, or back here on this poster is our recent for opening session, our J.C. Strong. You can see the opening session the last three years. So the first year down there in the far left, in the back there, was the first year and you can kind of, I had shared that the J looked a little bit tail-heavy, you might say, that's where folks were walking in and became more organized and then we got to be connected. And then we're J.C. Strong. I remember that first year, the folks kind of thought it was going to be herding cats, trying to get 1,400 or 1,393 or 1,478 folks. But anyway, it worked out great and thanks to all the folks and Amy and their office and all the part of that, I think it came out really well. So you'll see those in buildings. We'll also have those on the wall here, also on the screen here behind us, so it kind of exemplifies who we are and that J.C. is not just Jefferson City Public Schools, but Jefferson City is a community, that we are stronger together as we work as a community. So I have here my report. I'll just touch on here a few things, the Stronger Together posters, I want to touch on that. I'd shared with you at the last board meeting, our game plan that we have, that we've shared, and that's kind of a plan of what is our plan to become a premier school district? And with different parts to that that we're excited to move forward with and as we refer to. Today is the 18th day of school and as we move forward, we have a long-term stretch goal that all of our students, 100% of our students will be at or above grade reading level. And that's a long-term stretch goal and that's something we want to continue to work toward. To do that, you focus on the little things and the big things will take care of themselves. We will here, starting in an October report, our attendance after today being the 18th day, our attendance is down a shade from last year. Our eclipse day, which I will touch on here in a second, on the 21st of August, was an awesome day, a great learning experience in our buildings. Some of our parents felt they would be stronger together if they were together with their kids at home. Okay, how can you argue with that? That's a great thing. So with school, we're strong together, but while they were at home, just a great learning experience. So kudos to Brian and at the elementary level, Lori in secondary, as far as with Gary, as far as with making that a part of a very valuable learning day with that. So our attendance, then the office referrals, that's another part we'll look here. You know, today on the 18th day, we can compare and see how our referrals are. That's not a true reflection, but we'll be looking at that each month here, starting in October, comparing those goals. The solar eclipse, I touched that here at the beginning, will also be determining all of our schools, what percent of our kids are at or above grade reading level. So that's a long-term stretch goal. That will withstand time. I've shared publicly, whether it's a, it doesn't matter what, whether it's Republican, Democrats, it doesn't matter, reading never goes out of style. And so that's something that we feel is sustainable, of always having that as a focus. Our enrollment data is flat compared to last year. The third Wednesday in September, we'll have our official enrollment. I have here East Elementary. East Elementary is our smallest elementary school with 288 students. That's not the official final here. Like I said, it'll be on the third Wednesday of September after the dust settles. Last year, East Elementary had 399 kids. So it is now our smallest elementary school with an average class size of 16 students per class. The next largest elementary school is Callaway Hills with 19 kids per class. So three kids less than the next school as far as average class size. So we're really excited about that. As you know, last year, we went through some process of changing some boundary lines with Moro Heights, Thorpe Gordon, and East Elementary, so I just want to give an update on that. Underneath the partnerships pillar, our faculty council, that's something that in the past, I talked to Dr. Straub and Dr. Kimball yesterday. It was something that in the past and that previously that kind of gone away as a school district, having a faculty council. We're going to start that again in October. Each of our 18 buildings will have a teacher that's on that and we will meet on the Wednesday prior to our board meeting. And we're excited about that, starting in October, a faculty council. Coffee with Larry's, community coffees. We had one on September 1st, our next one is on October 6th. We'd like to invite folks to come out to that. It's at the Miller Center at 7:00 a.m. You can come and go as you please, we'll have coffee, we'll even have some foo-foo coffee creamers that you can add to whatever you would like. It's a lot cheaper than Starbucks too. So that's on October 6th. We'll invite folks out for that. We'll have, we give an update on the bond issue with timelines. Carrie Gannford with Architects Alliance has been at each one, he'll give us an update on that and kind of where we are with plenty of question-and-answer time. They've been well attended and we're excited about that. The school naming aspect, I'll ask Amy, is going to facilitate that process as far as the naming of the second school? So Amy, if you'd come forward and have you give an overview of that?
Has anybody asked you guys, what are we going to name this high school? Just probably, at least a handful of times a day. So I told Citywide today, I said, "It's about to get really fun." So we're ready. When you are, to start promoting and collecting submissions to name this second high school. And then kind of like the timeline that Larry and I have talked about, we would like to, again, start promoting and collecting those submissions any day. We have an online nomination form that's ready to go, that we'll promote through all of our social media platforms, email, pretty much any way we communicate with our stakeholders, they'll have access to submit a name if they so choose. Then after, while this is going on, we'll bring in a committee. We have an invitation for committee members, probably, again, after we roll this out, give that a week. Bring the committee in to meet for one, two meetings where they will do the hard work. They'll come, gather what's trending and themes for names, and they'll come back to you with some recommendations for you to consider. Yeah.
Amy, could I interject? You're also there, included on the form is a name and then also the why behind that.
Oh, sorry, sorry. We're going to make them tell us a little bit, tell us your name, tell us your email, tell us your phone number, tell us what you think the name should be, and give us a little bit of a why. Give us your why, some compelling reason why you think this second high school here in Jefferson City should have the name you've provided us. Thank you for that. And then, so after the committee gets together, the committee will, again, group these names by theme, trend, however, they come to us, and then they'll come back to you, the Board of Education, with a list of names for you to say, yes, we could get behind three, four, five of these names to be considered that could potentially be on that building forever and ever. So those names that you all are comfortable with will then take back to the public for a vote that we put on a slate. Again, same similar process. Any and everyone will be able to vote once per device. You'll be able to vote 20 times a day on which name you like the best. We are able to lock down those parameters. And then at the end of the voting process, again, dates are a little loose right now, we would like to unveil the name of this brand-new second high school at the time we break ground. Again, all the while trying to keep this momentum going that I firmly believe we're still writing after the campaign, keep that going, announce the name, kind of give somebody something more exciting than turning dirt, although we know this is still really exciting with the second high school. We'll take a breath and then we'll come back with the similar same process, minor tweaks if we need to, with mascot and school colors. All the while, that stakeholder, that community input, and people that are just waiting for that invitation for us to ask, and a lot of players that may or may not have come to the table during campaign time, they're ready for this part.
Comments or thoughts? Well, one thing I might just add along with that is, when you said the three to five, we don't know, you know, will three stand out? Will two, will four stand out that, you know, separate self from the rest that come to you, that ask for your approval, that you would be good with any of those four? And then once you say yay, then take that to the community and then let the community decide on that. So it's not just saying whether there was three or four. We said, you know, if there's five here, you know, and then down here, then the numbers are, you know, maybe six, but I really hope not. Honestly, we're hoping three to four, words pretty simple, but that you guys are good with any of those three. Maybe two just stand out.
Right.
I mean, we really don't know, so.
As for the category of the committee members, can you kind of give us a flavor of the kind of groups that we're looking at that we make up?
I can, I can, Michael. We've looked at the different pockets, so there'll be school administrators, right now probably three-ish, four teachers, three support staff, parent volunteers, partners in education/business partners, and community members. And we feel we've got a good cross-section and some have already volunteered, again, who may or may not have been participatory during campaign time, but this was the piece they wanted after the yes, yes happened, now is the go-time that they wanted to be a part of.
Could we at least also consider having a student population on that?
I'm glad you said that because that's been a piece that we weren't certain. And again, a lot, these ideas, these aren't my ideas, these are best practices that we cobbled together from districts who do this more often than we do and are successful with this. And some have included students, some have not, but we absolutely can. We absolutely included that student piece with the mascot and the school colors. That's something they can get behind, that they will be, that will be a part of them. But you're right. And we have some guidelines that I'll be happy to share with you all as well for naming a district facility. Not policy, not a procedure, but some tried and true guidelines that will help the committee when they go to work in putting together those recommendations.
You said you were taking online submissions. Will there be an effort to have our student body be able to?
Any and everyone can access it.
To get that information to them?
Yes, yes.
Because I think that'd be a tremendous buy-in, you know, even when you look down the line, today's kindergarteners, when their grandchildren will be going to that school.
You bet. This is open to anyone. The only parameter and limitation, if you will, you only nominate once per device and then when we get to the voting, you'll only be able to vote once per device. People will get creative and go find different devices and that's okay. I can't control that one, but yeah, absolutely. This will be fun. I'm excited for this. So we're ready when you are.
Sounds good.
The one nice thing is, is we're not the first community that's added another high school. So, you know, of communities that here's what's worked, here's what did not work, and try, like Amy said, of, you know, what worked best, and this is what we feel like. There's a sense of ownership that the community still gets to decide. The board still has some, hey, am I okay with these three? You know, making sure that we're okay, and then the community can decide from that. So, good job, Amy. You guys got any other questions on that? Okay. I have here continuing on in my report, tennis courts. I shared at our last board meeting, as far as I hope to have an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. As you know, at Dunkland and Lafayette, thank you. I would say that is straight south, but I'm sure it's not straight south. The board still has some, hey, am I okay with these three? You know, make sure that we're okay, and then the community can decide from that. So, good job, Amy. You guys got any other questions on that? Okay. I have here continuing on in my report, tennis courts. I shared at our last board meeting, as far as I hope to have an MOU, memorandum of understanding. As you know, at Dunkland and Lafayette, thank you. I would say that is straight south, but I'm sure it's not straight south. Back over the hill, east, southeast?
East.
Okay. I'll just say, it's over the hill. Streets in Jefferson City are not exactly north and southeast and west. But at the intersection of Lafayette and Dunkland are the tennis courts. And with Lincoln, the Parks and Rec, ourselves, we talked about this last board meeting, as far as partnering with them, all three of us partnering, it's not on our land, but the availability for us to use that. So we're having some expectations for usage, the maintaining and upkeeping of that, who's doing the scheduling and so forth. So with just four courts, we do not anticipate them being used for competition. We'll continue to use Washington Park, but as far as possibly with practice with regards to part of the curriculum with Simonsen and the high school. So Gary Versloes and our secondary folks, they're going to be meeting here. I met with the Parks and Rec Department, I met with Lincoln, and as we look at, we are stronger together, having a partnership there. So we'll be bringing that back to you. I shared with you that we would hope to have the MOU. The city shared it's going to be in the November before that's completed. They actually have, for the pavement, laid the pavement here in the last week, week and a half. So they're making progress. We're looking forward to that partnership going forward. Live streaming of board meetings, we've already touched on that. The Helius Foundation Golf Tournament was something that I was able to be a part of and that we believe we are stronger together as a community, and not just our public schools, but our parochial schools as well. And then the stewardship pillar of our three pillars, just to continue to live within our means. DESI is updated on schools and what they spend on a per-student basis. This is all from the DESI website, and it has what we are spending on per student compared to the state average. So as you can see, this last year, we were approximately $900 less than the state average on a per-student basis of how we spend our money. You can see there, over the last five years, that trend has held true, that we are being good stewards. Other areas that we can continue to be good stewards, absolutely. But kudos to our folks, Jason, their office, Denise, our business office, our folks in our leadership positions, our buildings, making sure that they're living within the budget, that they're spending to ensure that our students learn and as we work to become a premier school district. That's all I have at this time. You guys have any questions?
Questions are followed.
Thank you guys again for coming.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good report. Chief of Learning Update, Dr. Brian Shindor.
All right. Thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to take my time this month just to talk a few minutes about some of our other departments that have done work for us, who are helping along with teaching and learning. So when you talk about raising the bar, what are some of our other departments doing? So I met and had a conversation with Joe about technology and all the work that took place over the summer. There was a lot of things that happened, and his list, literally, it was, it just went on and on and on. And I said, well, we need to narrow this down. So what I did was, I took the, what I see as, I told him the top 10 things that I think happened out of the technology department for the summer that I believe is going to help with teaching and learning and raising the bar. So I want you to hear these top 10 things. This happened out of our, out of our technology department over the summer. They set up and delivered nearly 3,500 student Chromebooks, 3,500, that they were, that they set up and got in the hands of kids. Set up and delivered over 700 Chromebooks to staff members. They held the Google certification classes to help support our teachers with those Chromebooks and how to use those. They set up over 100 staff accounts for our new staff that came in. They had to set up those accounts for us. They installed over 400 charging cards throughout the district to house and charge those Chromebooks. They transferred over 600 iPads from Simonsen to the high school. They upgraded our wireless security and our content filtering, which allows us a little more security with filtering the content that our kids can use on the Chromebooks. They wired installed 26 smart boards across this district, provided devices for Project Lead the Way, graphic arts, photography, HVAC, and welding, and they implemented a single sign-on for SchoolNet and HMH, which allows our students and teachers to sign on to their Chromebooks much quicker, not having to have multiple passwords. So a lot of work that took place, and we believe those things that happen through the technology department are going to help support our teaching and learning, help our teachers and help our kids. So we're very thankful for the tech department. In addition to that, our assessment and student information department, Dawn is here. So first, I just want to publicly say thank you to that department, because every year when, as we're getting the school year started up, there's a lot of work that takes place with getting kids enrolled and registered, getting the paperwork, getting the documentation, you make sure they get to the right bus and the right school. There is an incredible amount of work. And I know that not just Dawn, but her staff, April and Amy and Valerie, spent a lot of very late nights down there in the basement doing work for us. And so we're very thankful that they got hundreds of kids registered and enrolled. So thank you to their department. But one of the things that Dawn is currently doing with our administrators, elementary principals, is guiding them through the process of accessing the databases that they have access to. So they can, she shows them how to get in and access all their map data and their iReady data and their attendance data. So not just how to access it, but the best way to organize that and to use that for improvement. And so very thankful that she's doing that work, because out of the teaching and learning department, the curriculum office, one of our primary goals this year is that we establish very consistent practices across this district where we are using formative measures in the classroom, and we are applying intervention models across this district so that we are meeting the needs of kids, whether those kids are at a lower level, a middle level, or a higher level. We need intervention models that can support all of our students if we're going to raise the bar. So that is one of our big initiatives coming out of the curriculum department. So thankful that Dawn has started that momentum with that. And then Gary and Lori, obviously, will work with our principals to work on the measures that I talked about. Also, I mentioned in my report to you that the curriculum team is currently doing rigorous curriculum design training. That was all day today and all day tomorrow. That training is very important, because what it does is, it establishes the protocol that you use for writing curriculum, regardless of whether it's core or non-core, you follow the same process. Very rigorous components that fit within your curriculum that have to be present. And so this teaches you the process for writing that. Very important training for that team, and our team then will guide all curriculum writing. And just, I can't express enough how important that is for us to have curriculum that is world-class and solid and on track for our kids. It is an important process. So excited about today's training and looking forward to tomorrow.
Questions for Brian?
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Chief Financial Officer, Chief Operating Officer.
Good evening. In the operations department, as you know, summertime is a mad rush of getting ready for the first day of school, getting the buildings clean, getting facilities up and running, getting teachers hired, getting students enrolled, getting them routed on buses, mad rush to the first day of school. Then the first days of school are a little bit hectic and working out the bugs, and I think we've gotten off to a great start. Since then, this time of year, it's basically the compliance season, especially in the business office. We've had, the auditors have been in once. As you know, we are on our third auditor in three years, and the first year you work with an auditor, it is a challenge for them as they're getting to know us. It's a challenge for us as we're getting to know them. And I can tell you that this auditing firm that we're working with, they are, they are looking at things that we've never looked at before. They're, they're looking into things that our longtime auditor from before hadn't looked at, the auditor from last year didn't look at, and we're learning quite a bit in this relationship. So I think it's been really good, but there are some things that we're learning from that, and we're going to get better because of this relationship. So be hearing more. We'll get the audit and finance committee together, and we'll have a, we'll have a review. They're back again October 9th. So they're spending, spending a lot of time in district and then working on things out of district, or sending documents back and forth. Also, this is the time that we're in compliance with DESI, finishing final expenditure reports of how we spent money last year. One of them is early childhood special ed, and that is 100% reimbursable program. They've moved that deadline way up. So I know the ladies in Bridget's office, that they're working with us on getting, getting all those expenses compiled and then making sure we get all the reimbursements we get there. And also, the High Needs Fund is a, is a big pot of money. I think last year, we got $750,000, and that's a reimbursement to us for costs that we spend that are on a, if we spend more than three times the normal cost on a child, we get reimbursed for that. So we have to go through these, these children that have a lot of services, make sure we put all of those expenses together and prove those costs to DESI and get those reimbursements. That deadline has been moved significantly up on us as well. So a lot of, a lot of compliance going on around the district. Mentioned in my board report, we will have a, and I think it was in Gary's board report also, that we'll have a budget amendment in October. We've got our assessed valuation now, we've set our tax rate, we'll have our student count at the end of September. So a lot of the revenue pieces are falling into place. An important piece of compliance that we're working on right now is our first payroll is in September. So when we get payroll, making sure everyone is set up correctly, coded to the right place, knowing that how, how those people are going to be funded, what we're doing today helps us with compliance this time next year. So that's another piece of not just compliance, but, but getting people set up right and paid correctly. But a lot of, a lot of important work going on. Any questions?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Good reports, everybody. Thank you for that information. You see, you've got future dates in front of you there. I'll draw your attention to just a few of them. We won't go through all of them, but the JCPS Foundation Gala is coming up on September 26th. And so if you haven't had an opportunity to attend that in the past, I think most of us have, but certainly it's a great occasion. The foundation does a lot of tremendous work on behalf of the district and our kids and our teachers, and so it's a great opportunity for us to come out and celebrate the work that they've done. And I would encourage everybody to make sure that we put that on our calendars, try to make it, if at all possible. Board of Education Leadership Retreat, meant to late October. We've kind of kicked around a couple of dates, as you all know. And so I'll ask you here just a second, let's pull out our calendars and see if we can't get that scheduled. I know this is a busy time of year for everybody, and we just need to settle on a couple of dates so we can get moving on that, make sure that we have a good retreat for everybody. And the, a date with JCPS for local legislators, we've set that for Friday, November 17th of 2017. And as far as details for that afternoon go, it's actually probably an afternoon on an entire day, but those are still forthcoming. We're putting those together. But excited about having the opportunity to speak to our local legislators and the extended invitation to have them in our district and talk to them about current activities in public education, and hopefully it's a good opportunity and maybe something that we might want to look at going forward, but we'll see how this year goes. So just wanted to give you a brief update with that.
Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have our SVPs from local legislators?
We have not sent out invitations. That's actually something that we're just beginning to work on. So we've spoken, Larry and I have spoken about sending an invitation to basically anyone that would like to attend. So we'll, of course, focus on our local legislators first. We'd like to make an effort to do that, but we'll send, we'll be sending an invitation to the, to the House as well as the Senate and to let those folks know that if they have any other members that would like to make an effort to attend that afternoon, they can certainly do so. Moving on to old business. Second read of MSBA Policy Committee Recommendations on the policies that you see there, BDDB and BDDH. Mrs. Murray?
Yes. In your packet on page 104 is an explanation of the minor policy changes that were introduced last month, basically calling for the deletion of limiting the total amount of time for public comment. And since then, I've also received common sense requests from Lorelei to make an additional unrelated change, and that is on page 105, policy BDDB. In the first paragraph, the last sentence talks about the tentative agenda, related materials, and minutes of the previous meeting shall be mailed to each member. And Lorelei suggested that we strike mailed and change, change it to delivered, because packets haven't been mailed in a long, long time. And delivered would cover any method of delivery. And if there's no objection to that change, I would further ask that part of the motion be to waive an additional reading on just that one change, so we don't have to bring it back again. And as Chair of the Policy Committee, I support that change as well.
Same here.
Second?
Thank you, Michael. Lori, second.
As stated by Pam, right?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Just clarification?
Yes, sir.
So are you, is this both the BDDB one and BDDH one that you're asking for approval on?
Yes.
Okay. Were the, on the, on page 108 there, which was the board will establish a time limit for public comment period of crossing that out?
Yes.
Was four minutes not?
Well, the sentence above it, the board will establish a time limit for the public comment period referred to earlier in both policies, it talked about the board chair could set a limit, like for example, we're only going to take 30 minutes total of public comment period. Elsewhere in the policy, just two lines down, down from that, it says the board will establish a uniform time limit for each speaker, but nowhere in the policies does it state what the limit is. In the past, this body has set three minutes, and the policy committee recommended four minutes, which we did talk about, but since the exact minutes weren't in the policy, it was felt that that could be incorporated by procedure, so that should we decide to change that to five minutes or at some point six or two and a half, that it does not require a policy change, but just rather agreement to change the procedure. And then, of course, on the board, on the JCPS website, under board, where it talks about the meeting, then we would need to change that to four minutes.
Yeah, I think that was the spirit of the understanding of that. The also part there, as far as with the spokes, the number of spokespersons, you know, I think that the intent was that if folks took the effort and wanted to come speak, you know, but while the board using reasonable judgment, if there's 738 people lined up, I didn't want it for the board to be tied to listing four minutes to all 732 if they were so happened to want to. The thing we could use some judgment. Do you have a spokesperson for at least 100 of you, or, you know, of a?
You can always ask, but certainly on those rare times, like for example, when we look at the tax levy, and that, then that portion of the meeting is actually a public hearing, which has different requirements. And I'm not 100% sure about Missouri law, but in some locations, if someone wants to speak during a public hearing and for some reason can't, then that can jeopardize their rights, their rights, should they choose to take it to another venue. So in general, I think we can ask, but it's not reasonable to force it.
I think in the past, we have, we've made, passports have made that request to folks whenever we've had a number of people to come and speak. I don't recall that ever being an issue. Typically, there's, there's been, you know, at least one or two folks that have identified, self-identified, and since you're all, I'll speak for the group. So that keeps the move, that keeps the meeting moving along, and like, as you say, you know, it's a good balance. It's, that way, we're respectful of everyone's time, but as to Pam's point, that if you come and you're passionate enough about an issue and you want to be able to be heard, then we're, as a public body, elected officials, we're giving folks that opportunity, so.
I agree with you a percent, but we are striking out the number of spokespersons. That's been before without that being with the strike, that's actually make you aware that hopefully if there was that many, that you'd say, you know, I would hope that, that you would say, well, the policy's, I mean, I'd hope we would use some judgment there.
Sure. Yeah, I know. Common sense, good judgment, and public service. It's tough.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you for raising that.
Yep.
Good point. Okay. So we have a motion. Stephanie, could you restate it, just to make sure everyone knows what we're voting on?
That on page 104, we'll make an additional, I'm sorry, make an additional change on page 105, last sentence, and the first paragraph will change from mailed to delivered.
And then, and the other changes as denoted by strike-throughs on the two policies.
Everybody ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. Very good, thank you, appreciate your work on that, Pam, thank you, Larry, for raising those points.
Thank you, Lorelei.
So your agenda initially denoted a construction manager at risk contract, but as we discussed earlier, we don't have a contract to approve this evening, but Mr. Hoffman does have an update for us.
So, page 109, you have two contracts, we started with the standard AIA contracts, the first one is the agreement between us and the construction manager at risk, and the second one is for the general conditions of the contract, and there are two pieces of the first contract, one is pre-construction phase, and it goes through that, and so this is in total about a $5 million contract, and the pre-construction phase is about, is exactly spelled out in the contract, is $100,000. NavHolz is currently performing pre-construction work without a contract, so they're doing this at their risk, but they know that they're at risk of the $100,000, and they're wanting to make sure they're still doing great work for us, because they see the eye of the much bigger picture of a $5 million contract, so they're, they're wanting to get this contract signed, we're wanting to get it signed, but we both agree, we want to have a really good contract that we all agree upon. So what you have before you is, this has been to, we've had, it looked over by an attorney, that we've sent some recommendations back to them, we've gone back and forth several times, and this has been looked at by all parties' attorneys, but last week, our architect team asked that they be able to give feedback on it, this is new in Missouri, and the main sticky piece is the guaranteed maximum price, so construction management at risk, this is new in Missouri, and the construction manager, the at-risk piece, where they're going to give us a guaranteed maximum price at some point, is, is kind of wishy-washy, when do we get this, do we get it at the end of, when all the bids are in, do we get it earlier than that, and if so, they're going to want to build in some contingency, so both the timing, really the timing and the structure of the guaranteed maximum price is, is kind of what we're still working on, and so we're waiting on feedback from the architects, they've promised it this week, but as we know, they're busy working with NavHolz right now on drawings and estimating and all kinds of other things, so expect to have their comments back this week, want to have it reviewed by our attorneys, send it to them, we'll get it back and forth, and then any changes to this, we will get to you, and as soon as I get that, we will probably be in touch with all of you, because we'd like to get probably a special board meeting, because we'd like to get this approved. And Pam, this evening, gave me some, some things she would like me to look into also, so be in touch with you and have those sent off and looked at.
Questions for Jason?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Good update. I know that process is moving forward. Approval of contract for St. Mary's Hospital and Therapy Services, Ms. Bridget Frank.
Hello, so this is a contract that I presented to the board last month, and we, I had gone back to St. Mary's and asked if we could change that one clause about if disputes were settled, they would be settled within Cole County, and they were very gracious, and had no problems doing that, so that's what this contract is, it's just a revision from last month, changing it to Cole County.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Lorelei.
Second.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
They were really easy to work with, so. The second.
We have to vote.
We have a, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the first one, let's take that up first, and we can move on to the next two. Any discussion about the initial one? Okay, very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you.
Okay, the next contract on the list is Advantage Nursing, so this is a company that we contract with for students with special needs, that the student requires an individual nurse to come to school, so this is a student that has had nursing services before, and she has left the district for some health reasons, and now is back, and so we would like to contract with Advantage again to continue to provide those nursing services for this student.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Lorelei. Thank you, Pam. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Any opposed? Last one.
And then my last contract is with Lifesong Growth and Wellness, so this is a company, again, that we've contracted with in the past, this is just a revised contract, updating it, it hasn't been updated in a long time, and so this is a company, local company that we contract with to provide some counseling services for students with special needs as part of their IEP, and then also if we should need a psychological evaluation, either following a disciplinary hearing or through our special education process, so just an updated contract with the company that we've already worked with.
Same here.
Michael, Lori, second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Rich.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
Okay, with that, we've reached the, near the end of our open agenda, anybody? Lorelei, you're prepared.
To suspend open to enter into closed meeting by roll call votes, as soon as chapter 610, 021, the Bay Statute of Missouri, section one, legal actions, causes of actions or litigation, and 13 individually identifiable personnel records, and 14 records which are protected from disclosure by law.
Action by roll call vote?
I need a second.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
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 Seven second delay. Seven second delay on that one.
Very good.
Is Rich?
Yes. Very good. Okay, yes, very good, so thank you all, we'll take a 10-minute break, and reconvene down here. Thanks everybody for coming.
We'll stay here. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you all.